Everybody, good to see you. Tuesday, May the 6th, staff meeting. Looks like we're talking solid waste fee. Tom, take it away.
It's actually solid waste week, so we have staff today, and then there's some meetings later in the week to deal with solid waste. Susan's here this morning to kind of give us the overview on solid waste fee and the plan. And I think she's got some other meetings scheduled this week to get into details about the actual fee process of this. But Susan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Since we have a couple of new commissioners, I think a history on this is appropriate. There are Kansas regulations, and I have the whole regulation up here, but what's in red is the important part. They allow counties to establish a schedule of fees to be imposed on real property. So it's on the property bill that people get there. We are being transparent. There's a line there that says solid waste fee and tells you how much it is. And it's in the solid waste plan that we do. And I'll be presenting the plan to you on May 14th. We have to do an annual update, so we have to adhere to our plan. So we can establish a schedule of fees based on the uses that the property is. Is it an office building, a hospital, a park? And the volume of waste coming from that property. So we look at both items as what are they doing and how much waste? So we first enacted the fee back in 1999, so it's been around a while. And the commissioners have to vote on it every year to determine what you want the fee to be. It was based on categories of who benefited from the programs and the type of waste. In the beginning, the base rate, which is the household waste, was $5.79. And then you could see the different tiers, and that was for the businesses based on the amount of waste and the type of waste. So you can see it wasn't very much, and that's a one-year dollar amount. And here's some examples of what we had. Divided agriculture, commercial, construction, manufacturing, retail, small, medium, large. And large would be like a mall and 5.79 times the number of tenants in the mall. Commissioners asked us in 2023, when they were looking at the fee, as to really, what should we do in the future? It's been a long time since 1999 that we studied the fee and looked at the details of how to develop it. So they asked for a committee to be formed and bring it back to them and analyze it to see if what was applicable in 99 is still that way today. So they recommended a thorough review of the tiers that we currently have, a history of the solid waste fee. They wanted to see how it's changed over time and how it's appropriated to the different categories. So here's the committee list of who was on the committee to look at all of this. We had the appraiser's office, the clerk's office, environmental, and budget. It's quite a few, and we've met and worked, looked at it. How are we dividing this up? How is it looking? And here's a history of the fee over time. Tier four is the yellow one you see at the top. That would have been the most expensive. And base residential is the purple one. You notice, let me get the pointer here. Yeah, that's not going to work. The one to about the third year in, we decided to drop the fee, and it went down from just over $8 to $4. But then the next year it started going back up. It hits a peak, then goes down and back up. So when we decide that, oh, we don't need that much, all of a sudden we discover, yes, we need to up it slowly each year again. Back in 99, we were simply looking at the fee to pay for education. There's household hazardous waste facility to build that and also create a solid waste plan. Businesses in the county could not get a solid waste grant from KDHE until the county had an approved plan on the books. So I worked with a committee of 30. I do not recommend that to anybody. And we worked with the committee and have subgroups on different categories of solid ways, like recycling or composting, businesses and hauling and disposal. And everything you see in green is all of the programs we added since the initial fee was approved. So it's quite a few things from, we inspect solid waste facilities weekly. The facilities we're inspecting weren't even built back then, so we've added that. We have the household hazardous waste expansion, the remote collection events we do every year, the electronic waste events, the waste tire, bulky waste coupons. Then we have illegal dumping for townships. If something's dumped in their area, we have forms. They take to the transfer station and we get the bill. They don't. So they provide the labor. We provide the disposal fees. We work with illegal dump sites, metropolitan area building and construction department for cleanup of properties. If someone is about to get fined and they can't really afford it, we give the dumpster and pay for that if they do the labor to get the material. So it cleans up properties with sharing of responsibilities. Christmas tree recycling, medical waste drop offs. We've now got seven of those. Storm debris cleanup. We have air curtain burner and tub grinder to help dispose of the material. This fall will be our first mattress coupons that we'll have. And we've worked with the city of Wichita that people bring it there and then we get the bill. And we're limiting it to two items per disposal. So change in cost for programs. If you look at the first year a program was offered for HHW and O2 to waste tires on down and compare the initial costs, like $116 per drum and what we're paying now on an average 225. You can see how much our costs have increased as you go down here over the years. So that's another reason the fee changes year to year is the cost of doing business increases. And for example, what you paid for getting rid of material at the transfer station was $34 a ton. Now it's $74 a ton. So when we have these cleanups and everything, that's what it's costing. Research, we looked at the haulers and told them, here's different categories like office buildings, malls, hospitals, parks, whatever the category. Can you tell us what the amount of trash is that they dispose of? And we gave them a fixed time period, so it's comparing apples to apples. It's not like, well, we got this one from the fall and this number from the spring. We wanted to compare it exactly week for week. And we looked at it and the range from 12 tons for carried that out annually to over 1,800 tons a year. So that's quite a spread. And then we had everything in between. So we determined basically a house has one ton of trash a year that they're disposing of. So we went through all of that and looked at who used the programs. We have a long list of businesses that use our household hazardous waste because they're a small quantity generator. We have lists of businesses that used to use the tire event. We don't allow that anymore. But we also have the past tire event, lots of cities, townships, USD 259, parks departments. A lot of people were coming in, dropping off tires. The committee developed a new tier system, and that looks at the base rate. The high-density residential, so it's per unit. High-density residential plus like a restaurant in the building, maybe as home for the elderly or another that they serve food at it. Then the tiers based on the amount of tons going down to the highest over 1,500 tons a year and what the amount was. And giving some examples of high-density residential apartments, hotels, motels, and the plus here with the bar, restaurant, assisted living, banks, restaurants, manufacturing, retail. If it's in green, they used to be in a higher tier prior to this, and they've moved down. If it's in red, they've moved up. So county commissioners passed a resolution in June of 2024 that they established a schedule of fees to be assessed against the properties based on what I just showed you. So that was what was approved a year ago. When the property notices went out, all of you know that people didn't like being in a new tier unless it went down. And so we worked with the clerk's office and appraiser's office. Out of over 261,000 notices that went out, only 37 different ones contacted either commissioners and us and budget and appraisers office. We compared notes and, you know, one person may have contacted each and every department and their commissioner. And we tried to explain to them that the commissioners wanted it to be more equitable based on the amount of waste being produced. And questions we had is one owner has many parcels. Even the county where the courthouse is sits on multiple parcels. The solid waste fee is billed on a parcel that someone owns. So if you own four parcels and your hospital's sitting on it, unfortunately, you get four solid waste fees on your tax bill. We pushed to say, go to a title company and combine your parcels. And this only happens once. From then on, you only have one bill for a parcel. And Mark's back there going, yes. We also have, oh, we're a nonprofit. We're exempt from taxes but not fees. So we'd have to explain that. And they noticed an increase, and then we explained to them how we wanted to make it more equitable based on the type and amount of trash. And so here's the big problem, the land codes. Within a code, you may have a variety of different types of businesses. Why is it a problem? Back when we started the fee, there were only 32 land-based classifications. Now there are 228. So that makes it much more complicated when you're looking at the huge variety of codes that are out there. So we looked at the regulations that the appraiser's office has to follow. And land use codes have been replaced by the land-based classification. And the county appraiser shall utilize that in describing current and predominant economic functions of each parcel. They are regulated as to how they do the taxes. All appraisals be performed in compliance with the uniform standards of professional appraisal practice, commonly referred to as USAP. And that's how they followed it. They're regulated by law. They have to follow how they do things. It gave you an idea of the different categories. The 1,000 is the residence. Now, when I say 1,000, then you could have 1,001, 2, 1,980, you know? It's just the main category, residence, 2,000 general sales, 3,000 manufacturing, 4,000 transportation, communication, utilities. 5,000 is where we had the problem, arts, entertainment, and recreation. That's where the parks are. It's in the 5,000 category. 6,000 education, so your schools, universities. 7,000 construction-related business, 8,000 mining, 9,000 ag. So here's a snapshot of some of the 5,000 categories, and I've highlighted general recreation park. All of you know that there are large parks with a lot of things in them to offer or in small parks where you don't have that. And I like to do the house comparison. We have a solid waste fee for all residential properties. Last year it was $5 for the whole year. It didn't matter if you had a 3,000 square foot house or a 900 square foot house. They were all $5 a year. It didn't matter if you had a large family, small, retired, or a bachelor. Doesn't matter how many people are living there. Obviously, the large family is going to produce more trash. You can't go down door to door, and then, of course, if you did that, they'd sell to a smaller family. So it just doesn't work that way. Parks are the same example. You could have a nice green area with some park benches. You'd have playgrounds for kids. You could have something that's just called a park, and it's just grass and some trees, and that's it. So it doesn't matter the size of the park. They all got the same bill. But you can imagine a small city getting a bill with a couple of small parks without much to them. We're kind of upset when they got the new bill. Movie theaters, same thing, whether it's a drive-in, a small cinema, or a huge one with plenty of film. Same price. So the committee looked at all of this and thought, how can it be made even more equitable than what we did the first time? So what can we do with the current regulations and the current resolution that the commissioners approved? So we've already increased messaging. It's been on our website. When we sent out the tax bills last time, we had messaging there, plus the website address to go to. We talked about equitable, that you should combine parcels and why you should. It saves you money if you do so. We looked at changing the tier levels based on the code, but you'd have to change that whole tier. You can't just say only small parks within it. It would have to be everything within that tier for the most part. And cannot change the tier levels within a specific land-based code. Here's an example of what we had in the tax statement that went out. Talked about the fee changes, has the website right there at the bottom. The website has what is the solid waste fee? Why were they changing? And how are they changing? So there's information, contact information, believe me, our phones, right? I think we got each one of those 37, but that's not much. The first time we did the fee, they put my desk phone number on the tax bill that went out, and it was constant. I pay a trash hauler. Why am I paying this fee? And you had to explain to him, that's a contract between you and someone to pick it up. This pays for all of the other programs that we offer you. Whether you use a household hazardous waste facility or tires or electronics, or we take the limbs, help clear up after a storm, that's what your money went for. So we looked at the different units. We looked at the rates that were back in when we began. And instead of 8.38, last year we had $5, $4 for tier one, six. And we based it on the amount of waste and the type. You could see how it went up. Hardly, just hospitals in tier five. And that did not include the medical waste. That's just the trash they were producing from. If you've been a patient, you know anything you touched gets thrown away. Your booties, your gown, everything. They produce a lot of trash above and beyond, and the food waste, medical waste even adds to that. So looking at the 5,000 again, there's that recreation park. So our committee met a couple of times. The first time in March of this year, we decided we would do another waste volume study, get some more information, dig a little deeper to see how we could separate within that tier and compare to others. We've worked with the waste haulers. We've worked with property owners. Did a lot with the city of Wichita because they don't hire a waste hauler. They have their own trash trucks that pick up from the parks. So we worked with them, and we decided to reduce tier levels. I'm saying for certain categories, but actually, the new tiers are reduced for every category. And specific recreation codes is what we looked at. So these are all 5,000. All of those we lowered, except for the one in red, which includes the arena. So these, all of these in black, whether it's a museum, a racetrack, dine-in theater, tennis club, golf course, all went down from a tier four to a tier one. Again, reminder of what's in the different tiers. What I have in a different green color here used to be up here, I mean, tier three, went down. Sports complex arenas stayed the same, tier three. I said tier four earlier. It was tier three. So solid waste fee, what we're recommending as a committee. You can see 25, what the amount was, and the new amount for 26. Every category, we're lowering the fee. Here you can see it as a graph. The red is in 2025 fee. The blue is our request that the commissioners would have to approve for 2026. And of course, down here, when you're talking only four or five bucks, it's very hard to see on a scale of $100. But the red is slightly higher than the blue. And that's what we, as a committee, have proposed. And we'll be meeting with commissioners again on Thursday to discuss this in more detail. But I'm open for questions, and we have people here from clerk, appraisers, and budget who can also answer questions.
Susan, thanks for the presentation. Thanks for going back to give a little context to all of this discussion. It's a lot, and thanks to the committee for all the work. You probably didn't envision it was going to be as much work after the initial discussion, but here we are. I have a question that might give some clarity to the proposal. We can't, of the 5,000 class, like parks is the one that I think most of us heard from municipal parks.
And some museums as well.
Okay, and we can't just, based on what you said, we can't just make an adjustment on that subclass parts? So I guess my question is, if we're going to take the entire, are we doing the entire 5,000 class reclassification just simply because of parks?
We're also looking at the data from our second waste analysis. We determined that we could go lower.
Okay, so.
It's more than that. There's a scientific reason.
I mean, I wanted to make sure it was justifiable and we weren't just doing it. Okay.
Susan, can you speak, I mean, it was what, 3 million pounds was what they were generating when we went through the data analysis? And then you compared that to what other folks were doing in those tiers to properly to pick the new tier.
That's correct.
Okay.
I mean, it was, yeah, absolutely. Because that was part of our discussion too, was we didn't want to just cherry pick because a small group complained. We wanted to make sure that it was equitable and fair because that was the whole purpose for the change in the fee in the first place. To make it more equitable. We didn't want to walk that back.
Well, that's what I was getting at, and I appreciate that answer. Okay, other questions? Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Chairman, just curiously, so who's the authority that keeps the, that updates and creates these land-based codes?
Appraiser's office.
Is that Sedgwick County only or is this statewide?
Nationwide.
So somewhere at the nation level makes a code and that we all adopt it. Everybody across our country adopts the same code?
No.
Same description.
Mark, we're wrong.
Come to the podium and speak to it.
Yeah.
That's out of my will.
Commissioner, how the land-based classification system is actually an international system. And when someone, an appraiser or anybody chooses that code, they are referencing the function and structure type of that structure. How that, how that's being used?
Okay, so fundamentally, I see a big difference between Sedgwick County Park and maybe a community park that's very small. It maybe has, doesn't even have a trash, doesn't even have a trash receptacle. They don't collect any trash. And so the parks are vastly different, and yet they have the same code. How's that? Why can't we have a different code to designate the level of park that this is?
We're not going to make up codes. We're very clear UsePAP is what we're supposed to use. Now, if you want somebody from the committee to take our information and then change it, that's fine. But nobody in the appraiser's office will do that.
So during the 2023 discussion, we moved this all waste fee to use the land-based codes as a way to make it, we thought was more equitable. Is there anything that says we have to use that scheme to do this? We can do it any other way. Again, if we went back and we repealed the 2023 decision, what would we have then? Would not be, would not be land-based codes. What would it be?
Well, I mean, the land-based codes that we used to have are no longer in existence. So this is what PVD says we must use, and UsePAP says we have to use it. So the bottom line is, like I'm saying, if you want to go and make up your own schema, that's fine, but I can't do that. We won't, we will not be changing stuff in KAMA, the computer-assisted mass appraisal system. Because that, we're just talking about solid waste here. When we talk about appraisal, that has a different implications. We won't do that.
And this has to be done like parcel level? It can't be done based on assessed value or anything like that?
Right.
What's the fiscal note to make the change, recommend the change for the reduction in fees this year? What's the fiscal note?
It's my understanding that we're talking about neutral.
Because we added parcels. We added parcels.
Yes, we did.
And that allowed us, because we added parcels, that that number is, we can do less per parcel because we have more parcels added to the system. And that generates enough money.
We are growing, so it does come out to be relatively revenue neutral.
Sorry, Mark.
No, no, you're fine.
Can you speak to maybe how voluminous your volume of residential parcels is relative to everything else, which I think maybe puts this in?
We have some 180,000-plus residential parcels. And so when you look at all the other types of classifications, it's minuscule. Residential carries the bulk of the weight.
Just looking at, I don't know if it's on the page number here, but it says solid waste fee. There's a list of what, how many parcels you had in '23 versus '24. And it went from 251,134 units to 262,923 units. But that's a, it's a fairly small percentage increase. So how, if that was a typical year and we added, again, another similar increase, that doesn't seem to account for the significant reduction in cost for the, all of the tiers. So I guess in surprises, that many more persons added, it would make up that much of a difference.
I understand what you're saying, but when we did, we put all this out in a spreadsheet, we're looking at the big screen. It balanced out. It really did.
It's, and you also have to remember that parcels, when they change use, also get assigned to different tiers. And that can remove the, that can, that can increase their dollars. There are so many dynamics that go into this that drive the numbers that we are confident. I've got, I'm looking at my two budget folks in the back of the room. We feel very comfortable with these numbers. We feel very comfortable with these numbers, that it can support the programs that are going to be proposed to you from the Solid Waste Committee, just based on the minutia of the dollars. And again, because residential is so large and everything else is so small relative to that, those changes don't, just don't have a significant an impact.
Okay, so and the, and the policy that says that nonprofits and municipalities are not exempt from this, is that a state law or is that, where's the, where is that?
That I do not know. What I can tell you is the federal government is exempt. Other than that, to my knowledge, everyone else pays.
Good surprise. Commissioner Howell, Justin Wagner, I'll address that. I think we may have been asked this question before too, which is that while there may be generally an exemption for ad valorem taxes, this is not an ad valorem tax. So that same exemption wouldn't necessarily apply to these types of parcels. Happy to stand for any other questions on that.
And I had a couple of other questions here. I guess I'm not, I'm not, I'm not pleased with the, the high increase on the municipalities and parks especially. But I think there's, this is trying to be more equitable and fair. We can argue, is it? And I would argue it's not. I think that it's actually been, I think it's been a bad, a bad decision personally. And one of the things I noticed on the committee that did the work, and no offense to any of them specifically, but I think that the committee should have included some business owners. These are all staff members from county and it would be nice to have people who are not county staff on that committee to represent, I guess, different perspectives that we may not have heard from them, maybe as much as we could have or should have. But.
Commissioner, I'd like to add that our solid waste committee has reviewed all of this. We have Mount Hope's mayor, a mayor on the committee, Terry. And we have business leaders on the committee and they approved of this a month ago. And I just had a meeting yesterday afternoon and they were quite pleased at how we had reduced the tiers, especially Mount Hope's mayor. He thought that it was quite equitable. So I just want to let you know, we, through the committee, that we have the commissioners appoint members to. They were in favor of this.
I think there's some things that we, we pay for with this fee that I think are, are higher priority to me. And I think there's some things on this list that we pay for, I don't think we need to do at all. So I don't know if we need to have a different discussion at some point about which things we, we want to fund to this fee and which things we maybe would be wanting, maybe give up. But I would be, I would welcome that, that discussion at some point.
Well, we, when I present a solid waste plan, it shows all of the different programs we have and is approved by the commissioners every year. So when I present the plan on May 14th, that's your opportunity.
And you'll do two, two ones later this week on that aspect. So you'll hear it in advance.
So you made a recommendation that they use a title company to combine parcels. What's that cost to do that?
Angela John, Chief Deputy Clerk, pitch hitting for Kelly this morning. So it depends on the status of the properties, that they can contact the title company. And it's going to depend on whether additional work has to go into it. For instance, if they are contiguous and in the same name, it would likely be less expensive than if they were not in the same name. But that is an opportunity for the title companies to bid for that work. There are some complications that can come about. If properties are not contiguous or if they're in different tax units, sitting on either side of the line, they can't be combined. If they are platted and unplatted, they cannot be combined. And then if they are unplatted, generally that requires the work of a surveyor. Any combinations that we typically get that are unplatted are coming by way of a surveyor. And so that's typical, but those are, those are quite a bit more expensive when they're going through the plating process or going through a survey process. For our office, we did send out communication late March, early April, giving information to owners who had properties that were potentially eligible for combination. Gave them information on where to look, directed them to our website, gave them information there on how they could go through the process and just let them know that this is an opportunity. I know that the appraiser's office is probably interested in reducing the number of parcels if possible as well. But again, it is always up to the individual whether they decide to do that.
Okay, so for example, could a municipality put all of their parks under one, under one parcel?
Generally not, because they're not co-located.
Okay, so being contiguous is a requirement?
Correct.
Care about that then. And then again, so if they're not contiguous, but I'm sorry, if there's a couple of them that are contiguous and are in the same name, what's the, again, give me an example about what that might cost. I just want to have a ballpark number.
I haven't, I have not contacted a title, title company and asked for that work to be done. So I'm not sure if anyone here has.
Correct, but there's two people up here that wouldn't know the answer now.
Maybe all of that, I guess my final question is, so again, if we follow the land-based code, where you're saying we would be prohibited by law somehow. We cannot create a subclass under one of these, land-based codes, we cannot create a subclass.
It is my understanding that anything with a specific four-digit number, and I'll let the appraiser speak to it, but with a four-digit number wouldn't have maybe 51, 21A, B or C, dependent upon size. It's my understanding that that land-based classification code is used for appraisal purposes. And then when you're talking about size, that's what differentiates the amount people pay for taxes. And it is also my understanding that since the state requires us to use those codes for a fee, but a fee is not based on size, that that's kind of where it, it gets a little different. You have one per, as opposed to if you had a big parcel versus a small parcel, taxes are going to be big versus small. But I will let the appraiser and Susan speak to that.
I guess I have a related question to that as well, but I'll let you answer that one first, I suppose, but I have a related question.
I would like to say one thing about the combining of multi-parcels. I've talked to an awful lot of people and there's roughly 10,000 of these parcels that need to be combined. And one of the complaints that they talked to me about is the cost of doing it. And many of them say, look, I'll just pay a solid race fee. I don't want to pay thousands of dollars for, for a land survey and whatever else I'm going to need. Some, it's not quite that expensive, but they say, I think I'm, I'm fine where I'm at. I just, I just, me being the appraiser and probably sound selfish, you know, but it, it really is something that is near and dear to me to eliminate as much of these multi-parcels as we can. And if there was a way that we could find to reduce the cost, work with these people, it would be wonderful.
Yes, my question was, can we create a sub, can we create a subcategory? Again, follow the LC, the land-based codes, but create a subclass that we would treat differently based on the subclass we would create? Is that something we can, can do?
Well, then the KAMA system, I can't do that. Now, what I'm saying, Commissioner, is that if we create, give you those codes or give people those codes and let them create their, their own, whatever, they can do that. But what I can't do is legally go into my KAMA system or the state's KAMA system, excuse me, it's not my KAMA system, and, and, and change that willy-nilly to accommodate economies of scale. That is, is, is an issue that will create problems for Sedgwick County. We don't want to go there.
I'm not asking for you to do it as the appraiser. I'm asking you, on the solid waste fee, that we not just simply say, this is a large park that has, you know, generates a lot of waste, has a lot of visitors versus a tiny little community park, and we're treating them exactly the same. Are we allowed to create a subclass so we would understand this community park generates basically no waste? And this one generates a lot of waste, we're going to treat them differently? Could we do that by policy?
I don't see why you couldn't. I mean, as long as you're using at least how the, the, the parcel is being used. I think that if you do something according to economies of scale, you could probably do that. However, and I believe you wanted to speak on this?
I do, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the theory behind that. I don't believe that my tax system currently has an easy way to do that as far as billing is concerned. There may be a way to bill it if we build every single one as a special assessment. But that, as a separate special assessment, build on a special, a, a separate spreadsheet that got imported, some type of plan that was adopted. It would take us probably quite a while to figure out how to get that programmed though, and potentially additional costs with our tax software system.
I think we owe it to the taxpayers to do this. And again, I'd like to see an estimate what that would cost because I think that's part of the answer here. We have to solve this. I think another way to solve this would be if we know there's contiguous parcels and they're under the same name, we ought to, again, not for the appraiser, but for this, for this fee, we ought to allow them to make it, you know, make an appeal that this is really one property in the house used, even though there's a, a imaginary line on some map somewhere. Thus, it's, it's one park, there's one property, even though it's three or four parcels. So we would not charge three or four fees. We would simply be able to treat it like it's one. So again, that's another thing we could do to help this would be not technically through the title process to do, you know, to do it through GIS and through, you know, that the appraiser would recognize that change. But simply on the solid waste fee program, we would recognize that, that truth. We would adjust the fees accordingly if that was the situation. So again, I, I'd like to find some way to, to provide some relief to this.
I appreciate that input and we can speak together about some discussion, but I'm, I'm not entirely sure how we could recognize parcels combined without it going through the register of deeds system. And through that, generally when things are combined, they become of record through the register of deeds system. So those doing research to make sure they know what they're buying and selling. Generally, I believe that's the purpose for that. I think there's some people here could, could also maybe have some experience with the complexities of that on, on that side of it, but.
The appraiser a minute ago used the word, said 10,000 parcels that could be combined. I presume that means they're contiguous with another property, at least. That means at least, at least, that means there's at least 10,000 properties that could turn into 5,000 properties if they're combined. So there's a lot of this going around. And I, I think on this fee, if there's a way to recognize the fact that there's two adjacent properties that have two different parcel numbers, but they're essentially in ways used, it's one parcel in its own use, that this fee ought to be recognized, able to recognize that. And again, I think having a subclass would be another way to handle this. And so I think that we, we need to find a solution to this problem. I'm not, I'm not content to leave it alone. I would, I may be alone when I say this, but I would rather go back where we were than leave it where it's at. So I'm not sure what the best answer is, but I'm not content to leave it as is. Just being briefed so I can understand it is not the solution. I think we need, we need to do some work on this. It's not where it needs to stay. It's not fair and equitable. And it needs to be. And so I think there's a lot, there's a lot, a lot of problems with their current systems. As it's currently defined, we need to do something to make it better.
Commissioner Bluebaum.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Have we had anyone actually go out to the title company, get a survey and do this? Or, or is this new, they've never had the opportunity before?
I can tell you that there have been people, a few have gone and done this. And they did say that it was expensive initially. However, they did see the benefit in doing it because they wanted to reduce the paper that they get from the county. And so in, in working with their systems and so forth, they thought it was beneficial to do that. But, you know, each, each, each business i- i- is going to be different. But the thing is, when you have people that call, say, for example, they'll call me sometimes and they'll say, Mark, why am I getting five notices? You know, and you explain the, the situation. And yeah, the parcels are contiguous and so forth. And so they'll call me several weeks later. Mark, you know, I said I want to do this. I don't want to do it now. I went and I investigated, this is going to cost you more than 5K, you know, so.
So the, the rough calculations going on in my mind, I don't know that any of us would live long enough to get the benefit from this financially. I mean, if you're just doing to reduce paperwork, that's one thing, but I see no financial benefit in doing this. You know, if you're going to go pay all the, all the fees and stuff, I just don't think you're ever going to break even, offset the cost. I mean, you can correct me if I'm missing something, but I'm not seeing it.
No, I think the multi-parcels situation is, is cumbersome for a lot of reasons. But maybe that's a separate conversation in regards to how do, you and I talked about it, Mark, when I first met you, about the need to try to maybe get aggressive. I appreciate the literature that's gone out and the public awareness and the opportunity to these, but, but if they're not coming en masse to fix it, it's because it's, it's cost prohibitive and they're just measuring the benefit versus the cost. And I think it would probably help our systems in many regards. And, and certainly in the solid waste fee discussion, it would be beneficial. So I, I got a couple of questions on this. I want to make sure I fully understand what we, where I heard the bulk of the complaint was on the parks. In 2025, parks is under the classification is a tier four, paying $250 per parcel. In 2026, what will be proposed to us is moving that parks to a tier one, which will be a $25 per parcel. So a significant, I just want to make sure the public understands and the city managers that I'm going to call after this meeting, let them know what the proposal is going to be is we're moving parks to a tier one, the proposal will be, that we will vote on, tier one, $25. Yeah, okay, that helps. Susan, last question that I have. We're talking about solid waste fees and solid waste in particular, and all the things we do in regards to solid waste. Can you help me and the public understand the bulk of solid waste in this community goes to the landfill? Who owns the landfill? What's going on with the landfill? We're doing stuff from the county. Who owns this property where solid waste is going? What's that relationship?
Okay. The waste haulers, especially in Wichita, you can pick whoever you want to collect your waste. We don't have a contract in Wichita for one company or another. So individuals hire a company to pick up their trash. They can, after a period of time, say, I don't like the service, I want to change to someone else. Most of the smaller cities have a contract with one hauler to pick up the waste, offer curbside recycling as well. The trash, when it's picked up from the curb side, or if you have a business in a dumpster, goes to the transfer station up north at 37th Street North, just south of K96 on West Street intersection.
Right.
That's owned by Waste Connections.
Okay, that's private.
Right, that's private. There's a construction and demolition landfill next to them that's reaching capacity very soon. And it's private. North of K96 at West Street, there's Brooks, what used to be the municipal solid waste landfill, which was closed by the state. They have a construction and demolition landfill north of that. And they anticipate at least 100 years more of volume.
And who owns Brooks landfill?
City of Wichita.
Okay, so the transfer station is private. That's where the haulers go. They transfer it over under contract to Brooks landfill.
No, Brooks landfill takes construction and demolition material. So that's two-by-fours, roofing material, old carpet, that's drywall, that sort of material.
So the transfer station sorts that out? Holy cow.
No.
A lot of nasty.
Transfer stations per county law does not take construction and demolition material that's commercially produced.
So I throw carpet in my dumpster.
That's, if, if it's just your home and you're doing the work, that's different than someone going in, ripping down an entire building and taking asphalt from a road or anything like that. The reason is construction and demolition landfills per federal law are not as complicated as a municipal solid waste landfill. The type of material is totally different. When the transfer station gets trash, it's taken down to Plum Thicket Landfill in Harper County, which is owned by Waste Connections.
Okay.
If it's recycled material coming in, which is a totally different truck, it goes up to recycling facility called a material recycling facility or MRF in the business. And it's in South Hutchinson and it's owned by Waste Connections.
So city, county, beds, private are all touching our solid waste?
Yes.
That's great. I think I understand, here's what I know I understand better today is our solid waste fee and what's going to become. I think I understand, here's what I know I understand better today is our solid waste fee and what's going to be coming before us and all the classifications. I think the multi parcel is a separate discussion that I, I am interested in trying to help solve that problem and at least bring some reprieve in some regard. But okay, I, I think I got a better understanding of what we're going to do. This is coming May fourteenth to approve the solid waste plan.
And the fee.
And.
Two separate presentations.
Got it.
And so I think you'll hear two, two ones on Thursday about the plan and on Friday about the fee. If you still want those, if you tell us you're, if you don't need them, that's fine, but.
Um, do we need two, two ones on the? Is that what you're asking? If we want two, two ones? Okay. You guys want two, two? Yeah, let's do that because I do think the conversation about what we're doing with it, I think is merited. So you can give some justification for what we're doing with the fee and knowing that it's revenue neutral is helping, but.
Okay.
Other questions?
Commissioner. Yeah, I, I think the, the fee is fine for two, two ones. I think what we do with the fee ought to be a workshop because I think we need to have a conversation between commissioners. I, I don't know, but I, I would prefer to make that more of a conversation between the all five commissioners. So that's okay. You want to do that when you adopt the, well, you want to do that in a staff meeting? I would prefer to have a staff meeting or a workshop that gives us a chance to talk about what we do with the solid waste fee.
This is coming next Wednesday.
We do have some time pressures and, and this is a, um, a month where you don't have a ton of meetings for us to pick from. So I don't know. Angela, do you want to speak to the effect it has on, on your process if we don't get this approved this month?
Any changes to fees themselves can be dealt with in the tax system, um, without a problem. Up through probably mid-June. Um, however, changes to the way that fees are assessed, whether they're assessed by unit or not by unit, um, so by unit or by parcel, that change would have to take place prior to the appraiser's final CVI and before they certify values to us and miss your final CVI.
Which is, because we, I, I, to put some levity to it, we, we are not having a county commission meeting on May 21st or the 28th. So the 14th is the last meeting that we have for May. And you typically send your notices to the cities. Does that need to happen? The certification piece, I, go ahead, Mark.
We will certify the role in late May.
So we can't wait until June to do this? Is that what I'm being told?
Yes.
I, I think for the part for the clerk's office, I'm okay with doing, doing that on the 14th. What I'm saying is, should we have a mattress coupon or not? That's a discussion we need to have.
So you would be okay with even if you reduce the number of programs offered, still assessing the same level of fee regardless? I think typically we try to assess a fee that ties to those programs that cover those programs. So as long as you are aware that if you cut those out, we may be generating a surplus in that fund next year and you're comfortable with that, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Well, I would like to keep these fees as small as possible. So I don't want to look back.
If we staff this next Tuesday, because the only other thing on the agenda for, for the staff discussion next week with noise ordinance, that's thirty minutes maybe. Um, if we staff this Tuesday, does that allow us to pivot fast enough to modify fees within a day? Looking at you, Lindsay.
Uh, I'm going to look right at Ronnie. I don't, I don't know that it would, um, because we would have to go back and figure out the exact costs. If we have to do it, we'll do it.
The other, while Ronnie's walking out, the other option is we have an agenda review on Friday. We could have a half hour discussion on Friday about this topic too. You're all together.
Fine with me. I, I'm okay talking about this on Friday. And again, I maybe, maybe this is a four to one thing. I don't know, but, uh, it just seems to me, I'm just looking at the tire around that pictures that, you know, we had just recently. It, there is, there is, Commissioner Dennis, when he, he was here, he was concerned about this, as I am still concerned about this. There's obvious abuse. I would say the, the vast majority of people who pay these fees never use anything we offer, these fees pay for. A minor, a few percent, I don't know what their numbers would be. I would venture to say a few percent of our population gets a benefit from these fees. And ninety-five percent, I'll just throw a number out there, don't get a benefit at all. So at the end of the day, we are collecting a fee that for some it's a very great service and for some it's an opportunity for abuse. And for others that become victims of the system. We need to talk about what we're doing here. You know, government, in my opinion, ought to be reserved for things that people cannot do on their own primarily. And again, household hazardous waste facility itself, I think provides a way to, to keep things out of our rivers and illegal dumping and things like that. But some of the things we're doing with this program frankly, is, is almost encouraging bad behavior. And I, and I have examples of, of this and so again, I, I, I know these things are well intentioned, but I think they have consequences and we're, we're charging people more than we should charge them, in my opinion. We're doing some programs that frankly are not necessary. And I think that it opens up opportunities for abuse. And so I just think we need to have a, a robust discussion about whether these things are appropriate or not.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. I know you have complained about mattresses being illegally dumped in your district for some time. We have people call us about mattresses and what are we doing about it? So for the first time, we're offering this mattress coupon this fall to see how it goes and how people respond. And part of the funding for the bulky waste coupon, which does not include mattresses, because there are individual costs at the disposal facilities, whereas the bulky waste coupon is up to a thousand pounds of what people can throw away. Uh, we're balancing between those two right now on the number of coupons we've issued.
It was like a good discussion for Friday. Any, okay. Go ahead.
Tom, you want to throw it on Tuesday?
We can.
I, I don't know if we're going to get this fee adjustment.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I, I'll tell you where I'm at. I, I think where we, I think last year's work, we tried to make some things equitable on the residential piece in particular. I thought we achieved that. The outlier for me was the municipal parks. I think this achieves it, what's going to be proposed to us. I do want to have the conversation. But I think that it's going to be too late to change fees. I think we can still have the conversation on Tuesday and if, and if we run a little bit of a surplus, we can take that into consideration in 27 to try to make the adjustments, but I, but I would love some input in, as to these programs and what government's role is in some of these things.
And the third option to consider here is, you know, I think the commission is going to have a lot of discussion about government function in the next couple of years. And I'm with Lindsay, we tried to align the fees with the services provided. And I think we are awfully late in the game in the 26 budget year to have that discussion. Not to say we couldn't have operational discussion on solid waste figure. Anything else the commission wants to talk about for a 2027 review and looks, that's a, that's a third option here. But I will schedule whatever you.
Staff it Tuesday, if, if that's okay with you, Tom and Susan Lynn, if that's okay, Lindsay. And that way we'll just have the discussion and I think Commissioner House certainly wants to have the discussion. I think that's merited and, um, and I think we should. I'm, I'm happy to have that. I, I, I would agree. I don't know if we can change a fee, um, in 26. I think we're, we're late in that game, but I, I think the discussion should happen.
I, I think we could potentially change the fee itself, but not the structure.
The tiers?
Yeah. Okay, Ronnie's gonna.
Thunder stiller. What has to be decided upon prior to our last CVI, which is going to be the Friday before Memorial Day is our final CVI is the structure. So if we're going to keep the structure we adopted for 25 and 26, or for 25 into 26, the fees themselves that get charged per tier can be decided up to, I think Angela said mid-June. She's writing something down. It's the structure that we have to have, that's part of a file that we have to balance against when we import our final values into the tax system.
Okay. It's helpful.
So.
It just is another comment. I think that, uh, I, I would like to give, uh, Susan a, uh, a compliment here as well, because it wasn't very long ago that we went and toured the, uh, the recycling facility in Hutchinson, as well as Plum Thicket. We have a, there's a, there is a training room out there. We had a wonderful briefing to, to see and how, and really understand and experience how this trash is managed in Sedgwick County. It is a fascinating tour. I think I was the only commissioner that at least toured that time. I'm not sure anybody else has ever gone, but it was a very educational opportunity and, uh, I appreciate you putting that together. I would encourage my colleagues here to, to go and experience that as well if they've not done it already. So, um, it was really a great tour. Thank you for putting that together.
You're welcome.
Okay, Tom, you've got a grip on where we're at. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Commissioner Meister was on, um, he's in, uh, he's in tied up in some commitments, but he was on and taking part of this conversation and texting as we went. So, okay. All right. Anything else? I think we're good to go. See you tomorrow morning, nine AM.